Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, December 16, 2020. And if we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitton?
Present.
Commissioner Waddila?
Here.
Commissioner Momoney?
My apologies, my microphone was not present. Thank you.
No worries, thank you. Commissioner Prickett?
I'm here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Lance?
Present.
And Chair Stephenson?
Here. Okay, with that, we would like to do a pledge allegiance, and those of us that are in the call-up room will stand for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the revolution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Did we receive anything prior ever? Okay.
I did not receive any comments.
Okay. And now we'll move on to the main event.
Okay, well, I-
Sandy Glance.
Yes, we have a commissioner who got upgraded to first, I think, right? Normally, when we would be all present, we would try to do something a little bit nicer than our digital appreciation, but hopefully this will suffice to actually, Commissioner Lance, and know that there'll be a little bit more formal of a plaque heading your way. But while we have you and others present, we did want to share what we have intended to present to you, so give us just one moment to pull it up here. And this is a certificate of appreciation. I'll let the chair do the honors and read it if he so wishes.
Okay, and just a second, let me get back here. Okay, certificate of appreciation. This certificate recognizes the incomparable Sandy Glance, whose years of dedicated service with the Planning Commission of the City of Troutdale have provided its citizens with a watchful eye and meaningful contributions to public affairs. Her approach and advocacy have inspired her colleagues, improved staff reporting, and ensured that development will respect and approve upon Troutdale's quality of life. Thank you for your service, and best wishes on the council.
I'm gonna miss you guys. Actually, kind of sad, this is my, I don't get to keep doing Planning Commission.
You'll still get land use applications from time to time, so we'll send you something every once in a while.
I appreciate that.
We'll see you next week.
Thank you. I guess it'll be great.
You can come visit anytime you wish.
Well, I'm actually kind of excited, while we're still doing Zoom, because that makes it pretty easy.
I just will say, it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
And going to miss you.
I'm gonna miss you guys, too, already.
Thank you. Okay, and did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from November 18, 2020? Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes, I have quite a few corrections, actually. I gave Amber a advanced copy, so it might be a little easier to follow along or track them down more quickly.
Okay.
See, I guess you've got them up on the screen there. On page two. Down toward the bottom, the second paragraph from the bottom that starts with Mr. Dammgen, the end of the first line where it says, "The existing gate and sidewalk." There was actually no gate on that property, it was actually a fence or barricade put up by the city, I believe. So I would change that, I would change the word "gate" to either "fence" or "barricade."
Yeah, it's kind of a barricade.
Yeah, yeah, good, good point. I might have used the word, but yeah, that's intended, for sure.
Two lines below that, in the same paragraph, where it says, "This is now a case," should be, "This is not a case," in OT. And the first line in the next paragraph, "Mr. Dammgen showed an image proved by the applicants," should be "provided rather than proved." All of those?
Yeah.
Okay, on to the next page. Page three, just got this, on the second full paragraph, it starts with, "Since this Under the numbers 15,000 and 16,000, I would add square feet rather than just feet, add the word "square" to both of those numbers. I see nothing on page four. Page five. About the middle of the page, the paragraph that starts Ms. Glance, the second sentence, she asked if it's culturally being used, should be currently being used. And the last paragraph on that same page, that also starts with Ms. Glance, the second line says, "Mr. Wilson," should be "Mr. Wilcox." It's all for page five. Page six, at the very bottom, very minor one, the second paragraph in the bottom that starts Ms. Prickett, the second line, it says, "You can and can't do..." The word "I" should be "in," "in," in those areas. Page seven, this first one is one of those cases where the transcription was accurate, but I, the speaker might want to address what was said. It's the very first paragraph, I'll start on about mid-paragraph. "Chair Stephenson asked if he felt," meaning Mr. Momoney's, "if he felt that he would influence..." He felt, if he would, if he felt that would influence his decision in a way, and Mr. Momoney replied that it absolutely would. And I checked the audio recording, and his answer was absolutely yes. And Momoney, I want to address that, I think he misunderstood the question.
He's nodding his head.
Okay. Thank you very much, I was going to approach that issue later on, but thank you for pointing it out.
Okay. So would we want to say "Absolutely would not"?
Yeah, that'd be the easiest correction, yeah.
Okay. At the end of the sentence, add the word "not."
That is correct, Mr. Chair, yeah, that's what I request. "Absolutely would not," is clear.
Okay, the next large paragraph in the middle of the page, halfway down the paragraph, there's, after the line that starts, "Short section," the next line after that, there's a word, word "reference" is actually misspelled, sorry, F-E-N-C-E, so that needs to be changed, the spelling needs to be corrected. And two lines down from that, I would change, where it says, he said he doesn't know what the negative grad is, I would change "grad" to "grade." And last paragraph on the page, three lines down, toward the end of the third line, the word "built," toward the end of the line is misspelled. Yeah, three, three lines down on the last paragraph.
Okay.
"Built a beautiful home," applicant has built a beautiful home.
Okay.
The, let's see, it'd be the one, two, fourth paragraph that starts, missed on. Third line says, I'll go back up a little bit, "And they are at..." It's, it's "right now," should be "it" rather than "its." And also farther along in that same line, after the word "was," there's an extra "c" in the text between "was" and "correct." And that's it for page eight. Don't see anything on page nine. Page 10, third paragraph down, that starts with Mr. Dammgen, I'd spell, I think website is normally spelled as a single word. So I squint those together. And then the last corrections are a little more involved. Toward the very end, where it starts, Chair Stephenson said that the Salmon Bridge is really bumpy. There is no Salmon Bridge by name, you're referring to the bridge on Cochrane Roads, there's no, there's no reference to Cochrane Road in that sentence. And-
Well, I think you were being facetious, and I think the nickname is the Salmon Bridge, so it got translated.
Okay.
But you're right, for the record, it is the Cochrane Road Bridge, replacement, that's just the first.
Okay.
And then the rest of that paragraph, there's some discussion of the intersection at the east end of the Troutdale Bridge, but there's no reference to actually describing the intersection or by name, by, you wouldn't know what intersection is being talked about.
Okay. I think we should put in Troutdale Bridge there.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone have any other corrections?
Just for that, that last one, we were just talking about, how would you all prefer to have this sentence finalized to incorporate this in here? Should I take out the highway?
No, many traffic accidents probably at the east end of the Troutdale Bridge, yeah. So after accidents, add that in.
Okay.
So that's probably starting.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other corrections?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a clarification, first of all, again, thank you to Commissioner Wilcox to point out the obvious, "would not," but on page seven, I think, you know, I'm fine with the sentence at the beginning of page seven, where it says, "Mr. Momoney said he has collaborated with Mr. Orth on the City of Gresham Planning Commission, when Mr. Momoney was a planner for the city." The following sentence, I'm fine with it, even though it's not exactly as exact, but it's fine. "He apologized for not making the relationship known early in the meeting, but I think a clarification is needed, because the reason why I did not make it clear by my knowledge of Mr. Orth is because I had not recognized Mr. Orth." So you can add that, he had not recognized the applicant by the only, I was looking at his name on a Zoom window, always say Tom, and I tend not to read the name of the applicant, try to be as objective as possible can. So, of course, when Mr. Orth introduced himself and he spoke, I didn't immediately recognize it. So I think, you know, a clarification of this needed here, so whatever you want to say, you know, but he had not recognized the applicant by solely the name Tom on the Zoom window. And of course, when he did speak, you know, for the sake of transparency, I need to disclose it, and that's what I did.
So maybe when Mr. Orth began his testimony, Mr. Momoney said that he collaborated with Mr. Orth on the City of Gresham's Planning Commission, would that be okay?
That's, that's fine, it's just, you know, we don't know what he was gonna read the record in the future, and leaving that sentence by itself might introduce interpretation, you know, and misconstruction, so that type of idea. Again, I don't read the name of the applicant, I saw just named Tom, and Tom did a ring-a-bell. But when he introduced himself for his testimony, and when I heard his speaking, of course, I recognize my commissioner.
Okay, so I kind of took what you had said and added a couple sentences here, how does this all look to everyone?
Yeah, I would, if I, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to be too difficult, when you had, he did not recognize the applicant based on his first name only, because that's what he was looking, if I had read Tom Orth, but his picture on my Zoom say only Tom. Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Of course, the obvious, like Commissioner Wilcox pointed out, that I said "would not" categorically, and that is ridiculous, right? Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, any other corrections for November 18? Anyone? Okay, with that, how about we put these dead?
I would move, we approve the move, the minutes of Wednesday, November 18, 2020, as amended.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the minutes of November 18, 2020, as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
All right? Okay. Yay, we got those done. All right, and-
Mr. Chair, before we kick off the next item, a potential request that we may have to ask the applicants, if that's all right with you. I believe, Mr., the applicants with the Aragon Shed, there might be some time sensitivity due to work conflict this evening.
Okay.
Without objection from PIR and the other applicants, would it be, in the interest of commission, would it be possible to flip those applications, so we don't prevent the gentleman from missing work?
No, no opposition here, any opposition?
The O D also, we believe the application would go a little bit quicker than the other one.
Okay, and is-
No, no objection from me.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and flip those, and at this time, let's start with the other one. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, all right, we have now agenda item five, and the matter this evening, the first one is case file LU-0017-2020, Aragon Shed. This is a variance and a Type III quasi-judicial hearing. And before we begin the hearing, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission procedure we'll be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed, seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens, members of the Planning Commission, Troutdale residents, who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items with the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes the final decision, for other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council, who makes the final decision. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with the trout, with the Oregon laws, and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds at home. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe in other criteria in the Conferent's Plan, Development Code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponent, then by opponent, and then by any party neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to respond, failure to raise this issue during this public hearing may validate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request, either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record is left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And as a final note, if you are wishing to speak this evening, I would call upon you, please state your name and address clearly, so that it can be picked up for the record. And before I open the public hearing, I'd like to ask if anyone has any expertake contact or bias or conflicts of interest to declare? I don't really know. Uh-oh, I gotta dial back in.
You lost the rule.
Yeah, I did, I'm coming back in, but, sorry about that. And I might as well just start with myself on this one, and I will yield the gavel to Vice Chair Mark Waddila. Upon reading the staff report for this and the comments that were sent in, I happened to notice that Shane and Cindy Stephenson were listed as people commenting, and they are a, how do I say it, like a fourth cousin to me, the Stephensons are. And I've not had any discussion with them about this application or anything, but I did want to make sure that that was on the record. And I guess you could ask, conflict?
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing, case file LU-0017-2020, Aragon Shed.
Unless there's a challenge, I can do it. Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, good, good. Okay, and with that, we will start with the staff report.
Just one moment while we get that pulled up. And just confirming, can everyone see a cover sheet, LU-0017? Thank you, Amber, thank you all. Okay, good evening to commissioners, good evening, guests, thank you all for being here. This is, again, a variance application with Type III quasi-judicial hearing for what we're calling the Aragon Shed. And we'll start with the staff presentation and move on to public testimony. One additional reminder, too, that at any one point, the applicant does reserve the right to basically effectively, what we call push the pause button, or allow the application to be held prior to any final decision. That can occur at any time during this hearing. The property is located at 1158 Southeast Walters Circle, it's within the Estates and Riverbend subdivision, immediately to the south of it is Sweetbrier Road, it is over kind of towards where old Sweetbrier Farm is, on the way outside of the city, just before you leave the city limits, it would be on the left side of the road. It is a developed property, was built about 2007, land use classification for it is low-density residential, it is a single-family zone property, and surrounding properties, the subdivision, if you will, are also single-family in nature, although there is a nature or reserved park area just to the east of the property across Viewpoint Drive from it. This is a street view image of the house from several years ago, you'll notice, and I'll go back to the map real quick, that this is a very interestingly shaped property, we don't see too many three-sided properties that front on the street. So we fully acknowledge, and you'll see later today, or later in this testimony, that it is certainly a unique situation and a unique property, so we fully acknowledge that. This is the view, not from Sundell Road and Swagard Way, I apologize, we didn't get that title changed, this is in fact the view from Walters Circle, looking through the staff. Why we're here is that the city learned about construction of a shed that was occurring on the property, and in consultation with the applicant, the applicant elected to proceed with an application to seek a variance request from the Planning Commission. The reason for it is setback issue, and in particular, the size and the scale of the shed prompted the requirement to seek a variance request from the Planning Commission. This is a drawing submitted by the applicant, showing again the rough dimensions of the house, you can call it kind of the interesting shape of the property, the house kind of situated at a 45-degree angle, the shed is more of a north-south type angle, but is within kind of that southwesterly portion of the property. They did provide distance measurements from distance off the house, nine feet at the closest perspective, and just within three feet on the western side. Typically, with accessory structures, we require a minimum three-foot setback unless the structure is of a certain size or height, then it has to respect the setbacks as if it was a regular building, and thus the regular building setbacks apply. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. What's being requested here, again, is a variance to allow for a residential accessory structure, shed, and I stress, not an accessory dwelling unit, this is not an ADU, to be located within the required setbacks. The situation we find ourselves in is that the shed is listed at about 275 square feet, which means it exceeds 200 square feet. That means it has to respect the typical building setback, not an accessory structure setback, which would normally be three feet, otherwise we wouldn't be here tonight. The shed is also 12 feet high, similar situation, 10 feet is usually the threshold, that you have to be under in order to do that. That's another qualifying reason, that's why we're here tonight. What's not being requested, again, an ADU is not being requested, there's no changes to the zoning district, no changes to the development code, and also a building permit is not being requested tonight, so even if the Planning Commission were to approve this variance request, it does not constitute, nor does it replace, the need for them to not constitute, nor does it replace the need for them to secure a building permit. By approving it, you would allow them the ability to apply for a building permit in this particular case. The applicable criteria that we have tonight, we have several sections in the Troutville Development Code, of which that second-to-last full appoint section 6.1300, the variance section is what we'll base our decision criteria off of, as well as a few other regulatory The review procedure again tonight is a quasi judicial procedure. You're the decision-making entity. If there is an appeal from any agreed party, it will go to the city council. The timeline is effectively this fall. We learned about the shed construction in September. We had some conversations with the applicant, discussed their options. They submitted materials to us in October with the re-submittals. We deemed the application complete in early November, and here we are tonight for the public hearing. And again, if the planning commission decides it wishes to approve this, the next step would be building permits. We provided notice to a couple of our agencies, Public Works and Fire, neither of which provided conditions of approval, but basically acknowledged it's not really in their respective wheelhouse. We did receive public comments, as is typically the case, we have to notify around the property, and there were four letters of general support from neighbors. One neighbor did, I think maybe think it or view it as through as if this was an accessory dwelling unit, and basically said, sure, it's supportive, but I also want to make sure that I get to be approved when my ADU application comes in. So with respect to that neighbor, supportive is good, but I think the, there was misunderstanding of what was actually being applied for this main structure, not a dwelling unit. City of Troutville's Planning Committee Division, we did suggest that approval could be issued with conditions of approval. However, in this particular case, and we'll dive into it, staff is actually going to be recommending a denial for this application, something we normally don't like to do, but we do have to explain ourselves, and we will here shortly, as to why we're recommending a denial. On analysis of it, the one thing that is a little unusual in this case is we do have letters of support from the neighbors. Normally that would be a good thing. It's normally concerns from neighbors are oftentimes the reason or the concern why maybe a application should be denied. Again, staff acknowledges, and everybody sees it, that there is a unique lot configuration. We have a really interesting lot here. But lot configuration alone is not the only reason why a variance should be granted. In this case, one could make an argument that this is an already substantially constructed building, and it's not an accessory dwelling unit. But in another case, that can also be seen as a drawback. This is something that was already constructed, and unfortunately, in this case, no firm has been secured nor plan review have been conducted to confirm whether the placement and the size of it actually met standards. So this is effectively a retroactive approval if so desired. Again, this is a larger accessory structure. Normally that requires more of a setback. So the concern I think that the planning commission should think about tonight is are you setting a precedent if you choose to approve an application that has been already effectively constructed? But let's go through the decision criteria. There are four of them, and they're coming in from the development code. This is where you have to base your decisions off of. Here's how staff had arrived at our recommendations. So again, special circumstances or conditions limited to lots' size, shape, and a couple of variety of factors apply to the property or development, and are not typical of general conditions. That is true. This is again a very unique situation. How it exceeds the front yard setback more than others, and same cul-de-sac even, in a smaller rear yard, there is basically less configurable space to locate something like this. So on this particular house, criteria is absolutely met. Definitely ineligible property for consideration. On item D, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties of the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. The applicant stated that they will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent property, would not diminish or impair property values, and the proposed style is consistent with the neighborhood. I mean, this is a relatively newer neighborhood, and you saw from the images that is a decent construction, I think we all acknowledge that. And critically for them, the nearby property owners support the application and do not consider injuries, and have provided written testimony to basically support that. And it needs to be said, even though the structure is about three feet off the west property line, there would be over 50 feet between the structure and the neighboring house to the west, just based on the configuration of that property's side yard. So again, it's a completely supportable and defensible position that this decision criteria meets. Where we're running into trouble from a staff perspective, how we advise on this application is these are the last two points. The variance authorized will be consistent with general purpose, the intent of the provision from which variance is sought. The intent of this particular provision is to prevent oversized structures from being located within setbacks. We're suggesting that you as a body would be unable to determine that applicant sought the minimum necessary size and location of the structure. Again, this is something that was already built. If we were in a situation where this had not been built and they were seeking it, you could maybe make a better determination of it and really work on site in perspective. As we were advising the applicant of their ability to go this route or other potential routes, we had suggested potentially reducing the size of it or reducing the height of it for their reasons, and they're welcome to expand upon them, they wanted to choose to go this potential route, by the fact that we had informed them that we would intend, likely, to recommend denial of the application. We certainly don't want to waste anybody's time nor money to do it, but we, and we had an obligation obviously to let them know of what recourse they have, and we normally, of course, don't like to be in this position. But our reading of our code suggests that this is not the proper way to handle it, and you might be moving down a precedent that you don't want to have. But we do not believe the criteria was met there. And the last section here, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and avoid inhibiting or causing hardship. One of the concerns that they have listed is that downsizing the structure would exceed the purpose of using it for storage and for quarantining. And the site plan indicated nine feet between the house and the accessory structure at the narrowest point. Shifting the structure outside of the side setback would reduce the spacing by about two feet. You normally need at least about six feet of separation. But why is it not be positioned a little bit better to lessen the request of further variance remains unclear to us. So we're unable to believe that this was achieved by their, by their application. And in our opinion, the applicant had not sufficiently demonstrated that reducing the size of the structure would result in a hardship. Household storage is regularly accommodated in smaller spaces. From what we can tell, there are no medical or health testimony out there that say reducing the size would constitute a hardship. And again, we're dealing with the fact that the structure was partially constructed and without need to be further constructed can be considered a hardship. There was never a plan or deconducted or permit issued. Staff has never afforded the ability to advise the applicant that what they were building is not within code or has a recourse in. So in our estimation, we did not see how the application met the criteria. And please understand, this is not an indictment on the applicant. This is a path that we're trying to see whether or not the applicant has a path to maintain what they've effectively built. The applicants have been generally very cordial to work with, even though we have a disagreement potentially on how they see their path forward. We don't like to do it. We rarely do it, but we do in this case are recommending denial. If the planning commission sees it otherwise, or if they wish, and it's completely within your wheelhouse, and we will sleep just fine at night if you want to overturn the staff recommendation, our request is that you do insert conditions of approval, which are listed here on the screen, do really basic ones effectively, dealing with any other review entities, making sure they follow through on permits, and that there's an expert on If you do wish to, again, actually lean toward approval, what we would request as a staff is that we call a reset or table the matter, particularly since we have another application tonight to allow at the time to provide revised findings that you can then review and then through accordingly. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions, and thank you, Amber, for a lot of her work in advance of the presentation.
Okay, questions for staff? Sandy Glenn.
No, imagine that, I have questions, right? Is there a difference in what the setback would be if they were zoned R7? And the reason I asked that is kind of ironic, really. That, the building of that subdivision is the reason I became a planning commissioner, so I'm pretty familiar with it.
Yes, I believe unless there were some specifics, which occasionally happen tied to either that particular property, typically R7 would require a seven-and-a-half foot side setback, R10 would require a 10-foot side setback. And in this case, that's the applicable setback, not the three feet, which is effectively what they kind of built to, which would be for accessory structures. It's a whole 200 square feet.
Less than R10. And have they considered anything like, and I don't know if this would even work, where they basically bought, you know, seven feet of zone from their neighbor?
I don't know if that came up in discussion, but I'm sure that can be something that they address when they come up.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one question. Chris, my apologies, I'm making assumption for the similarity of the jurisdiction, but please elaborate. So we are reviewing this variance under type three application, type three procedure. So my assumption at this point is that this is considered a major variance. So elaborate, please, making assumptions. So a major variance, in traditional, you are a deviation from standard greater than 20% or a minor variance, you have a deviation from standard less than 20%. Here we are roughly a 40%, 75 versus 200. Am I correct in this assumption?
Yeah, this is a major variance. So in this case, what we're talking about is a setback reduction of 70%. You can see the basic size and scale of the building, it would require 10-foot setback. They're basically at three feet, so they're seeking seven feet of a variance or a 70% reduction.
Okay, thank you. The second question is, would a redesign of the structure, of the shed, to bring the structure within 20% of deviation from the size itself, so around 240 square feet? Would that bring the dimension within compliance with the requirement for setbacks?
If I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Mamon, you're saying if they reduce the square footage of the unit to 240 square feet?
Would that somehow?
Right, so I guess what I'm, to make sure I'm doing my math correctly, let me, let me think on that, if I may just get back to you on that, I want to make sure.
Of course, yeah, no, this is, this is just to see if it is obviously a starting point for a conversation where by bringing the variance from a major variance to minor variance, we can start to clarify the hair. And obviously, to the applicant, and...
This might be a little helpful for you. The two things we had suggested prior to the hearing that they could potentially do to come into compliance is to reduce the height to 10 feet, which obviously they have it roofed already, so it would look different, and yes, it would look maybe awkward, but that gets them under, with under 10 feet potentially, if it's even possible. And the second was effectively to reduce the square footage to 200 feet, which is the maximum standard. We might be able to entertain an administrative adjustment on it. A demonstration of doing that could potentially help on that. But again, the issue is not so much the size of the structure in this case, if they were to reduce the size, then it comes under a completely different setback standard. The issue here is the variance from the setback standard itself. We were just trying to find a solution where they would be not having to come to the planning commission, let alone what might be allowed. But we can, we can look into that other thing, and I'll get back to you on it.
Sure, appreciate it. And then, my apologies, one more question elaborating on Commissioner Glenn's quest. If there was, if, assuming that this could be on our set or any other residential district, what would be the minimum required setback, side yard setback for, I know this is a difficult question, I'm asking for a difficult answer, but who is the minimum standard for side yard setback in a residential area that would be acceptable?
Well, it depends on the type of construction. It would depend on the type of construction, because we, you know, for like townhomes or zero lot lines, obviously, then it would be zero, because there would be a shared wall.
Got it, okay.
In this particular case, it would actually be more regulated by building code. And why we, why we use three feet for accessory structures is because it's presumed if you have three feet on one side of the property, let's say for a shed, you cross the property line, and you have three feet for another shed on another property, that's a cumulative total of six feet. And that's basically the prevailing building code standard as far as separation needed between the multiple buildings. So it's a hard question to answer, so unless it was firewall or whatever, typically it would have to be minimum, that's the best you could do, three feet.
Chris, my apologies, I know this was a difficult, you know, complex question, a difficult answer, but for my benefit, is three feet right now, the minister's background is presented right now, is acceptable for our standard right now for accessory structure?
You broke up there, Mr. Mamon, can you repeat the question again?
I'm sorry, is three feet, as the applicant is proposing right now, an acceptable side yard setback for an accessory structure?
So...
It is acceptable as provided that the, the structure is smaller than 200 square feet or 10 feet or less than 10 feet.
Given condition of approval with everything else, okay.
Right, all, all other things would generally be fine, other than they have to obtain a building permit as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much, please, appreciate it.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Glenn?
One other quick question. Do we place a limit on the number of accessory structures? We do, don't we?
Not so much in the number, but as far as how much coverage they can have on a lot, yeah, we do.
Could they ultimately break this up somehow into two different units?
Are you talking about, if the structure was divided in half effectively? Or are you talking...
Somehow they had two different structures. The total could, would be whatever, 240 feet, but, or 300 feet, whatever that is, but there'd be two different structures with the full three feet around them.
I think the one, that's a really interesting question, and maybe, maybe the applicant can elaborate on that. One potential, and I don't claim to know the floor plan of, of the unit, since we haven't had a plan review of it, but potentially, provided the, provided that the building code allows for it, you could potentially have a devising wall. And basically, the structure itself would have to stand independent of each other. So one half of what's under roof has to be able to free stand on its own. It's not relied on the other half, if you will, so if that makes sense.
Yep.
But it also, I mean, for that to work, it also has to be vetted by, by the building official. That might be potentially a condition of approval that you might seek in this case.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we would like to hear from the applicant. There you are. Go ahead and unmute yourself, sir.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Michael Aragón, and I'm the applicant. First of all, I want to say sorry for not applying for any license to build, is, I thought we, if the, I'm sorry, the homeowners association approve it, it means everything will be okay. So that's the reason that, why we, we did not apply for it, and we're sorry for that. I'm trying to think of what, how to, a question, or how to, how to keep these structures, or... I don't know, I'm sorry.
All right, I guess we'll just go ahead and, and we'll just ask you a few questions, if that's okay? All right, I guess we'll just go ahead and, and we'll just ask you a few questions, if that's okay? You all right?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Prickett?
Sir, do you have water and electricity to this structure or just electricity?
We're thinking about putting some bathroom and electricity.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Glenn?
I have a question, is there, I don't know what your relationship is with your neighbor. Is there a way that you could figure out some kind of maybe long-term lease of four to, what would it be, six feet along that property line?
My neighbor, my next door neighbor came to me and they were like saying, I'm, I'm 100 support, because they receive a letters and they said they were 100 support, 100% support, supporting us. And I'm so grateful for that. If ever, we haven't talked to our neighbor about adjusting or buying a part of their property or not yet.
Okay, and with the floor plan, is there any way that you could divide this into two self-standing units?
If ever, we're think, me and my wife were thinking if ever we could, we could keep the, the height, it will be okay. We can take off the 10-foot, I mean by 11, by, by five-foot existing, the shed part. We're thinking about that's one. Dividing it, I'm not sure if it will, it will works, but.
What part are you talking about taking away, the shed part?
Yeah, the shed part, because it has, it has a division. It's five foot, five foot by, by 11. It's the structure is 25 by 11 and the five foot is the shed part.
Commissioner Witter?
I think you're muted, sir.
So even if you took off the shed part, you still wouldn't be over the 200 square foot limit, correct? So we still would be in the same, same boat here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I got one. You keep referring to it as a shed, is it actually a mini home that you're building?
It's a playhouse and place, playhouse, place, playhouse with a, a storage, a part of it is a storage for us, for us to put our lawnmower. And that's the part, but most of the big part will be the, the, the tiny house or a playhouse.
So it'd have bathrooms and a kitchen in it?
There's no kitchen in it, but we're think, we, we plan to put a bathroom.
Just for clarification, for it to turn into an accessory dwelling unit, it would have to have a kitchen. So even if it has a room, even if it has a bed or a bathroom, it doesn't constitute an ADU until it becomes, has a kitchen involved with it. Legally.
We're talking sewer and water, this is maybe, right?
Sorry?
We're talking sewer and water.
Sure, but I mean, that wouldn't involve plumbing anyway if there was a restroom added or bathroom added.
Okay, other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone, anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to testify to this application? Okay, seeing none. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay. Do you know the size of the existing accessory structure? On the property?
The one that's there?
Not this one, the other one.
I don't have that, that information in front of me.
Okay.
Perhaps I could be clarified by Mr. Aragon if you wanted to ask directly, that's your prerogative.
Mr. Aragon, I have a question for you, what's the size of the existing structure on your property?
Oh, the, the building right now that we're constructing?
No, the, the one that's already there.
Oh, it's 10 by 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners? Comments?
Some comments. Remember, we spent a lot of time debating about whether an accessory shed should be able to even go up to 200 square feet? It used to be a lot smaller. And I think we need to keep the setbacks, I don't think three feet is enough if they're over 200 square feet. I think there are ways that they could either reduce the size of the building or get some kind of long-term lease on some adjacent property from a neighbor to show that that distance there. I don't know that, because there are 10, I feel like, I don't know that it needs to be 10 feet, because the surrounding neighborhood is R7 and R8, but three feet isn't enough. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I'm sorry, Commissioner Prickett, sorry about that.
I'm a little concerned that once they put water and sewer in, it wouldn't be much more to put in something else and make it not an accessory structure, but a living facility for some, you know, like a, like a tiny home. I don't feel comfortable with the setback because there are required setbacks and because that is larger than it normally would be, it's too hard to condition. And once we condition that, then the next one will be even, we're like setting a precedent if we permit it.
Commissioner Glenn?
I'm actually okay if they want to basically make this into a quasi-ADU, but I still think the setback has to be followed, that's the reason we have it there.
Right.
You need lock and size and, you know, this is the kind of thing that they should be able to get that in there if they need to, but they still need to have the setbacks.
Commissioner Witter?
Yes, the comment of the neighborhood right now is okay with it, but who knows who's going to be in the neighborhood in the future and once that building is established it.
Right.
You don't know what that's gonna, the feel of the neighborhood is gonna be then, so.
Right, very good point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If, if I may, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very cautious here, because I, I prefer not to make speculation or assumption about a potential future use of, of this shed, ADU, or whatever we want to call it. Because we really don't know what's happening, but, uh, uh, easy calculation. The minimal require, the maximum requirement affordable is 200 square feet, which means 20 by 10. The 275 comes to 20 by 1375. So asking, it is my sense that asking to reduce the shed by 3.75 feet, it is not, it cannot be considered a reasonable request or hardship on, on the applicant. I think we are in the boundaries to say 3.75 feet cannot change the nature of a shed or a storage shed or even on a, you know, quarantine area. I, I do feel for the applicant, because I understand now that I'm, sometime in collaboration with, with HOA that sometime the, the HOA oughtn't to overreach and, and to, to encroach in responsibility that don't belong to them and, and can create potential issues in, in development projects. But again, when we go to a shed that is 20 by 10, or this is a standard, asking an applicant, any applicant, to shrink, to shrink it by 3.75 feet, I, I don't, I don't think it's too much, I don't think it's a reasonable request. And so, maybe I'm speaking too early here, but at this point, I can be very clear that I will support the motion put, the recommendation put forward to, to deny this.
Anyone else? I think there's just a really, there's a couple of really tough things here. We're, we're within three feet of the neighboring property line. And we're within nine feet of the house. I think for building that size, three feet from the line is a real challenge.
Mr. Chair, if it helps, just from, just to clarify the staff perspective, the staff is not making a recommendation for denial necessarily because of the three feet, because we acknowledge that the property itself is unique, I think it is. And the crux of our issue is that it is an oversized structure for what it was intended to be, to Commissioner Glenn's earlier point. You know, units of this size and magnitude have to have that larger setback. We acknowledge the uniqueness of the properties, but it either has to come down or be relocated. And there, we just, we're not able to determine whether or not those efforts were put in place by the applicant.
Can I have a question for staff? The original application was September 22nd and the applicant was provided with the code, the requirements of setbacks.
There was a discussion with, with the applicant, what their, their, what the standards were to be. The reason for a little bit of delay was there was, the initial submit, we didn't have enough information to take it to planning commission, so we had requested additional info and they, they provided them, them that information.
Thank you.
How long has construction been taken?
Again, we, I think we found out about it in September, despite the applicant, they had to stop around that time, so it's been about three months.
Okay, Commissioner Witter?
And just another question for staff, is there any precedence close to this in recent years? Is there, as I'm still relatively new to the planning commission, just wondering if there is anything that comes into play here?
I think the, the, thank you for, for clarifying that. I think there's, there's, by precedent, are you referring more so about retroactively approving something that was constructed that had not gotten approval?
Correct, with, with being oversized.
In my five years, and, and I'll ask the fellow planning, your fellow planning commissioners, that I don't have a ripe election of, of having an application like this, where for un-vertical based construction that that's happened, and I'll ask the veterans if they have that. On, on site-based matters, there has been precedent for that, but on vertical, it's a much different story.
I'm pretty familiar with that neighborhood, since I've lived in that general area and walk around there. And I will say there are, not in the East Ridge side, but more into Sweetbrier, there are more than one way oversized accessory buildings that are built in 100%. And that kind of perturbs me when we have somebody that's trying to do it the right way and other people that aren't, so. I feel bad that this one was reported. Agree. I was just.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I move that we accept the staff's comments and deny the application.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Prior to taking the vote, Mr. Chair, I think it's going to be important for the applicant to understand that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Waddilla, and.
Well, again, just for, for the purpose of good governance and clarity, so what this means, Mr. Aragon, is that if planning commission votes on this resolution, effectively, you would be charged with taking down the structure or you must have, you will have to come in contact with our staff to determine if there is maybe a way to reduce the size of the structure in such a way so you wouldn't be compelled to take it down. So I just want to make 100% clear that that's what the motion is on the table. You still, at this point, have the right as an applicant to request that this matter gets pulled and you can continue to try to work with staff on a resolution. But please understand the repercussions of what are about to happen. So it is, I think, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make sure the applicant understands that.
Mr. Aragon?
If we could reduce it to 220.
It's 220.
Is it? And keep the 12. Is there a chance for us to? Is there a chance for you to reconsider? Because we're gonna use it as a quarantine place too? Especially, my wife is a nurse and she deals with the COVID patient, this is the reason why we, we proceed to build this.
So if, if, if that is a potential request, Mr. Aragon, then what, what, what you would need to do from a procedural standpoint is hereby declare that you wish to withdraw the application at the moment, talk with staff immediately in good faith here in the next couple of weeks, and then the matter can go back to planning commission as what we call a de novo application. You still have to go and get planning commission approval, but by reducing the square foot of the building potentially, it adds another variance application. So the fact of the case then changed. But it would then perhaps change at least the interpretation of an effort to come into compliance. So if that's what you wish to do, you can make that declaration now that you wish to withdraw the application prior to the vote.
Probably gonna withdraw the application uh, to take the chance if they will, uh, agree on that two hundred twenty?
If we would agree on that, is that, was that a question?
No, if we, instead of tearing it down completely, uh, we'll probably, uh, uh, I probably gonna take the, the, the application and, uh, apply for that.
Okay, understand that the Planning Commission cannot agree, or there's no guarantee that even if you were to withdraw the application, even if you make those steps, that the Planning Commission would vote to approve it. It would be a step in the right direction potentially, but there's no guarantee on that, so we want to warn you on that. But if you were to be denied tonight, you technically have an illegal building, and you would be required to take it down or to reduce it until it needs to go, so that's what the implication is. If you wish to withdraw it and work with staff in the next few weeks, we can say you are working in good faith and trying to come into compliance, and then we can have this at another hearing in twenty twenty-one.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, and so this time you're, you're wishing to pull the application?
Mr. Chair, if I may interject here, because this is a difficult question, of course, for the applicant. And if I may be so forward to reach out to the applicant, so I, I wanted to be sure that it is clear that the denial of tonight variance is as presented, of course. There is an outstanding issue at, with my colleagues and the staff, we agree, but, um, Director Damm can ask, clearly spoken about a great collaborative, collaborative effort between, between you and the staff. So I might suggest again an extra effort of goodwill, and talk to staff, uh, before the unthinkable can think, can happen, really. Um, and, and try to see if you can come to a compromise, understanding that obviously there is a, a line, clearly understand, where two hundred seventy-five square feet is not acceptable. And I don't know if this is the moment to, you want really to start bargaining, but again, we talked about before, the structure at twenty by ten or twenty by thirteen seventy-five, substantial is gonna be the same. So I might suggest to you that you think about it, and again, with the support of the staff, try to figure out a, a solution. Maybe withdrawing the application is the right way to proceed, uh, represented, but I, it seems, again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but having a pulse on, on, on this, on this commission right now a little bit, I, I don't think bargaining is the great, is the right way to, to proceed, two hundred twenty, two hundred twenty-five, two hundred fifty. We need, we need to see obviously some, some goodwill, we need to be in compliance with the code, we cannot blindly ignore the, the rule of law. So there has to be substantial rationale for it. And, and again, while I am strongly understand and, and your dilemma here, and also the situation that you say, I didn't know about the permit, we find ourselves with a structure that was built, let's call it illegally, to use a wrong euphemism, yeah, didn't know the right word. So, um, again, the denial is as presented, but it seems to me that you have plenty of option. You have a collaborative effort from, from the staff, and if I may be this forward, to suggest to you, reach to the, reach to the, to the staff again and, and, and find a solution. The staff obviously are very intimate with the code, and they can be of support. But again, recognize that there seems not to be willingness to compromise, um, uh, or to bargain on, on, on a solution. This has to be a substantial, structurally sound solution.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. And so that is my understanding, uh, then, Mr. Aragon, that you wish to pull the application this evening? Uh, because what we're, what we're ruling on tonight is what we have in front of us, which is the existing building and the setbacks, heights, and all of those things, okay?
Yes, I understand, thank you.
Okay. So he's wishing to pull?
He's got what he's asking.
My understanding.
Yeah, can you confirm this one more time verbally, Mr. Aragon, that you want to pull, withdraw your application?
Yes, uh, I will withdraw the application.
Okay.
Yes, we will make note of it, uh, and we will update the Planning Commission if there's any progress, um. Thank you.
We have a motion in the second on LU zero zero one seven two zero two zero Aragon Shed, and the applicant has elected to pull that application, and so there will not be a vote and decision on that item this evening.
Mr. Chair, uh, staff is requesting a five-minute recess due to a technology issue. If we can be granted that, and apologies to the PIR folks will be with you shortly.
Okay, five-minute recess, everyone, thank you.
We're getting to it.
Okay, all right, good evening, everyone, we are back in session. And we have case files LU zero zero one five dash two zero two zero Dunbar Industrial Storage Yard. This is a variance and a site development review type free hearing. And this will be, uh, for this period this evening, the Planning Commission will be the decision-making body. And we've already gone through the hearing procedure, so this time I will open the hearing on LU zero zero one five twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna ask my colleague Amber, um, I've just made you a co-host, if you would be able to share the screen, and if you could pull up the PDF files in the meeting folder for, uh, this planning case file.
Yeah, I'll just take a minute to get that pulled up.
And while we do that, uh, Mr. Aragon, I see you're still on the call technically, so you don't have to be on the call anymore. Uh, this is for the other case, and we'll be in contact with you about your case, um, probably in the next day or two. He's welcome, but you're welcome to stay if you would like.
Sorry, Chris, I'm, I'm looking in the case file folder, and I, I don't see it. Is it in the Planning Commission folder for tonight?
Yeah, it's in the meeting folder, uh, the, the meeting for tonight's folder.
Okay, got it, sorry about that.
Correct, and this is what happens when you, uh, bring the wrong power cord with you and your laptop runs out of battery, so we're.
Ah, gotcha.
Battery's out of battery, yeah, there you go.
Okay, just share my screen here. All right, is everyone able to see that?
That's the one.
Great.
Thank you, Amber, appreciate your help there. Uh, again, this is Lightning's case file fifteen dash two twenty twenty. Uh, we're gonna do the staff presentation, the applicant, PIR, Dunbar, are here as well as consultants, and thank you all for your patience, and thanks for being here tonight. Uh, the, the property tonight should be familiar to some of you on Planning Commission, who have the previous planning case file on this. Uh, this is at seven nine eight Northwest Dunbar. Uh, there's also frontage, significant frontage on Seventh Street, which is actually the frontage of most concerned potentially, uh, where, where the work, uh, can be contemplated to occur. Uh, it's partially developed site as a result, it is an industrial property, both in terms of land use classification and in terms of zoning, general industrial. Uh, there is a DECO overlay on this property, and that'll be really the focus of the discussion tonight. It is within the NAST boundaries of the Sandy Cranes Improvement Company, and the surrounding property uses on all sides are industrial in nature, likely. This is a view from that Northwest Seventh Street, this is, uh, prior to graveling that had occurred on the site. As you can see, it was, uh, in a natural state, uh, a big portion of the property itself was not in any sort of overlay. Uh, the reason why we're here tonight is that a portion of the property, in fact, was, uh, next likely. So tonight, what's being requested are two items, one is a site development review, develop, furage, gravel path, for material and equipment storage on the easterly side of the property. Can you all hear us okay? We just got an internet destabilization notice. Okay. Um, largely on the majority plot, on the easterly lot, not the easterly lot, um, and then as far as the westerly lot, which is the one that is largely filled. Uh, as far as that site development reapplication as a variance, it allows for the filling of an entire wetland that is on the site, hence what the DECO overlay standard was there. With not being requested tonight is any additional vertical development on that property, nor is there any sort of change or modification to any of previous conditional use approvals that occur on that property. Uh, while those still remain in effect, they are not conducive or affect the application tonight, nor they may have to be modified in this case, next likely. Equitable criteria are listed out here, uh, similar, uh, subстанards for both variance applications, but we'll also be looking at the development criteria for site development review as well. Um, construction standards for public works facilities, grocery buildings, fire codes, and state, state standards also. Next likely. Yes, next requirement, additional period, just like the previous one, Planning Commission is the decision-making entity tonight, if there is an appeal to it, so the council, and as before, the applicant returns the right to withdraw or hold the application at any particular time for this period. Uh, this has been a work in progress, um, uh, just months ago, we had a pre-application meeting, um, staff had to care for the situation on the site where graveling had occurred. Pre-application meeting was had, applicant dispossessed materials and hired a necessary consultant to provide the technical debt, of which there was some significant amount. Your package has the important stuff, but there was even more information produced, uh, of interest, of course, to engineers and designers. Uh, the applicant's submitted information, um, we were able to give it complete. Those applications were sent and public hearing approved this evening. If approved, the next steps are that the applicant secure any other relative permits and approvals from both the city and the state, although I believe there will be an update tonight from the applicant as far as their state, uh, approval. Uh, but we'll reserve that for various clarification later, next likely. Agency comments, agencies were provided comments, uh, for planning and public work, also threatened fire. Mid-County Lighting District came about, as did the Muni County Grains District, and most importantly, probably, the applications apart from the state lands DSL. There were no public comments received from the areas surrounding properties. Some were in comments that all agencies could suggest that approval could be had with conditions of approval. DSL approval would be required, although it would still have further investigation strategy. Next likely. Analysis of the application, there are several benefits and arguments in favor, there are a couple drawbacks. But one, a particular wetland that is being filled, and one of these, that was included in your package, we can show it here, I'm extracting, get it onto the slideshow, shows that there was a wetland on the site, however, it was an isolated one. And based on scientific analysis of it, it was considered not only low functioning, but a so-called low-value wetland. It is not part of a larger network of connected wetlands that we see in other areas, particularly in the northern part of the city. So therefore, wetland or fill impacts would not negatively impact surrounding properties, since it's again an isolated wetland, effectively a hit sort of wetland. The DECO overlay standard, remember, covers a lot of different things, including wetland conservation, and also habitat, sensitive soils, seep slopes, and all these other things. There are no other discernible habitats or natural conditions that DECO would normally seek to protect, uh, that are expected to be affected in this particular project. And long and short of it, honestly, given the size of the property, the, 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 the developed nature of it on the westerly side, graveling the lot actually approved emergency vehicle access, uh, to the site, uh, as provided that it had a connection from Seventh Street to the south. The drawback on this, um, this is a full-scale removal of a wetland. It's not typically occurring, but in this case, this might be an emergency variance application. As with previous application, this is a situation where the work had already been discussed. This is a matter of getting this, uh, project back to compliance, not only with city standards, but with state standards as well. You do run the risk of setting a precedent here, however, in this particular case, as mentioned before, we have had precedent of work that, or ground, site work, if you will, that had been done, that has been caused for, basically, has been worked out, and the applicant has to go through the proper channels and provide the proper installation to make this work. And in this particular case, the applicant effectively has done what they and the city have, have required them to do, to provide information to begin this project back to the compliance state. Let's move on to, um, decision criteria here. There's gonna be two sets of decision criteria, the first one will cover the variance that has to be in your sequencing, you'll need to handle the variance first, then you can handle the site development. So these criteria are the same that you just turned from the previous application, however, are often defined differently. So special circumstances, including lot size, shape, topography, applied to the property or development and use. The site conditions here are unique in the fact that the wetlands to be filled is an isolated, low-functioning, low-value wetland that occupies a central area of the site. If it remains effectively, the effectiveness of that layout for its intended purpose really rendered useless, it cannot really work in any other way. Given that it is really not a high-performing or critical, then in course of a larger wetland system, probably fine, usually the criteria is that, that scientific standard that includes. Uh, I think, next likely. variance authorized will not be insured to adjacent properties surrounding neighborhood, otherwise detrimental to public welfare. Similar circumstances, it is an isolated wetland affecting this property and only this property, uh, graveling of the site and covering of the wetlands, and improving mitigation elsewhere are actually the better thing, including the criteria. Next likely. variance authorized will be consistently general purpose and intent of provision to which variance is being sought. Again, reminder that DECO, the vegetation corridor and zoning overlay standard have a greater goal to protect those sensitive areas, including seep slopes, wetlands, sensitive soils, et cetera. Normally, when we have DECO incursions like this, there has to be that level of analysis, that level of scientific and engineering study to really determine what the outcomes are. The applicant went through those motions, hired the experts, they produced the report, and the body suggests that uh, this is a consistent provision, that you're not going to be negatively affecting things that DECO truly cares about.
Hey, Chris, Chris, I'm sorry, this is Steve Kreisberg, I'm the applicant. I'm really struggling to hear you. I don't know if you're, there we go, that'll help.
Okay, forgive me, I will unmask myself, um, if, if the COVID police are out there, or if there are any concerns about it, we are sitting more than sixty apart here.
Okay.
Forgive me, I'll do that, and I'll mask up as soon as, um, I'm speaking. Um, I think, please, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with compliance to avoid or minimize resulting hardship. Um, the applicant has demonstrated in their narrative that the wetland, based on the location of it, it's pretty centralized in that undeveloped, what's the previously undeveloped area. Uh, it would significantly hinder the ability to really use the property to its highest and best use. Uh, the added benefit of improved emergency vehicle access was noted, uh, and we believe the criterion was met in this particular case. Are there any questions on the variance-based decision criteria before we switch it to the site development criteria? And we'll certainly take any general questions about the application, uh, after the other set of criteria.
Questions for staff at this point?
Okay, moving on to the, uh, decision criteria for the site development review, uh, we have several. The application complies with all of the applicable provisions of the underlying zone and overlay zone. The development here meets setback standards, no building or land divisions proposed in the project. Should be noted also, on the southeastern corner, there is some existing tree area, um, that is being preserved there, uh, and there's not a concern about, uh, further impact to, um, the natural area. Um, again, the application is. Again, the application is applying for the variance, so provided that the commission approves the variance request, then it is approvable from a site development review perspective. That's why the sequencing matters here, variance has to be approved, of course, in order to meet the standard for the site development review. So that is going to be conditionally assumed to be met. The second criteria, the proposal includes required upgrades to any existing development that does not comply, effectively, were there any non-conformities on the site? Based on the previous application from 2017, there were two non-conformities present on the property, one of which had to deal with a lot line adjustment, a condition of approval for the conditional use permit that PIR Dunbar had to do, had to reduce the non-conformity. Those non-conformities no longer exist, so the criterion that are met in this case. Yeah, there's no non-conformities to resolve. Third item, please. Proposal complies with all of the applicable sites and development standards of code such as landscaping and parking. We find that this will be conditionally met. There are certain conditions of approval that planning in particular will impose or suggest to be imposed. There are no additional employees that are going to be added, therefore, there's really not a impact on the required vehicle parking spaces. Given that outdoor storage is being considered as an equipment storage or an outdoor industrial activity, there will have to be improvements made to site of security, shrubbery, berm. This is stuff that comes straight from the development code. There are going to be, there will be, have to be an updated landscaping plan to demonstrate compliance of landscaping and screening standards, and also an operation and maintenance plan detailing on how irrigation will be sufficient to ensure the survivability of any new plantings. So again, provided that the applicant is able to secure that before any additional permitting is allowed, we will say it is conditionally met. And the proposal meets all existing conditions of approval for the site of use, it's required prior land use decisions. Again, they had completed the lot line adjustment from 2017 that was required, that was met. There was, again, a desire for a marijuana retailer, cannabis ones that came in earlier, and those, they have no longer had any plans to locate at the site. There are no conditions from that conditional use application that apply here. So again, to reemphasize that, other land use approvals that have previously occurred on the site are not applicable in this particular application, therefore, the criterion are met in this case. Next slide please. So in this particular matter, we do recommend approval with conditions. Obviously, we prefer if applicants have not done the work first and then come back to come into compliance in this case, but in this particular case, the applicant did demonstrate that seriousness, given the level of involvement and work and consulting items they had to do, they had fulfilled that to our satisfaction, and we are recommending conditions of approval. For the next slide please. There are several from the planning division, largely updating of landscaping plans. On item number three, an approved joint permit application, which is effectively a state and Army Corps requirement prior to the issuance of grading permits, and I believe the applicant will give you all an update on that tonight. And then there'll be a couple of additional site obscuring, shrubbery, berm, fence improvements along the peripherates, better screen the outdoor storage, with some expectations of continued maintenance, and then, of course, an expiry of a land use decision after two years, as a reminder. We've been adding that to all of our, to all of our conditions of approval for site development. Next slide please. There are also conditions for public works, building, and Gresham Fire and Emergency Services, which you see here on your screen. And at this point, we'll be more than happy to take any questions, otherwise, we'll defer any further questions to the applicant.
Yes, Chris, if I may, a question?
Sure.
You stated, if I remember correctly, you stated in your presentation that the graveling of the lot has already occurred.
Correct.
The question become natural is, when? How long ago? And was it done with a permit, without a permit? And so, if it has already occurred, why are we here today discussing this issue then? So, many questions. Am I correct?
So I'll defer to the applicant when he has a chance to speak to clarify that. My recollection, Mr. Mamon, is we learned about the graveling and saw it in action earlier this year, code compliance that notified the property owner to stop work immediately, and then we determined through the applicant what their path to getting to compliance is. Rather than run it through municipal court, we always try to provide a pathway to compliance, as is evident with this case and with the previous case from earlier tonight, and that's effectively why we're here. In this particular case, we believe the applicant has, in good faith, satisfied what they would have needed to do. And while this is a, this would be a major step of approval, it's not the final step. They still have other permitting obligations they have to fulfill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lance?
A couple questions. How big was the wetland area?
I will have to double-check that, Commissioner. I can pull that up for you momentarily. I would, might defer also to the applicant or their consultant to provide the answer when they have, when they testify. So one moment.
I was going to say, I can move on to my next one. What defines a gravel pad versus just putting gravel out?
I'm not sure if there is an official definition. I think in this case, the way it was presented to us is that this would be a gravel pad that would be actively used for equipment and storage.
Do we know how deep that gravel goes? Or if it's different types of gravel at different levels?
Yes, there are certain compaction and depth standards that are particularly relevant to Gresham Fire, so that their apparatus can go about the site. I'll defer to the applicant's consultants to confirm the actual depth of that.
Okay, and then, how long do gravel pads typically last?
Again, it's based on operations and management. Obviously, they'll have to be resurfacing from time to time, and I'll defer to the applicant for their O and M expectations.
And what kind of equipment is going to go on there? Do we know if it's like stuff that would have transmission, brake fluid, oil, that kind of thing? Or is it more like, you know, pieces of products that don't necessarily?
Yeah, one moment, let me refer back to the narrative. I'm sorry?
I didn't recall it.
Yeah. Be just a moment, sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
In the interest of time, Commissioner, I'll defer that answer while I have a chance to look it up, and the applicant is prepared to answer as they can, and then we can confirm that on that.
Sounds great.
I'm sorry, we didn't have that ready available.
Thank you.
We'll wait for them. Okay, other questions for staff? Mr. Prickett, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
When there's a wetland that's filled, and the water is not, does not empty anywhere, where does that water go? Does it just sit there, or circulate down, or?
Surely, there was no water, and that's, we'll talk about that. We already have our permit now.
One sec, Steve. Hang on, sir.
Sorry.
We'll get you here in a second, okay? Okay, go ahead, Shirley.
My question is, once you fill in a wetland, no matter whether it's connected or not, the water is still there somewhere. It doesn't just go away just because it dries out. So, even if, if you infill it, the water's still going to be there.
Yeah. In this particular case, probably a couple of things are required. One was mapping, and the legacy of mapping, and whether or not what was mapped as a wetland actually, in fact, was a wetland, for starters, or whether it was hydraulic soil, potentially. Wetlands can, and again, I'm not an environmental engineer, so take it with a grain of salt, and the consultants can correct me, but effectively, wetlands can dry out over time due to hydraulic soil conditions, due to evaporation, due to a number of factors. So they're not always containing water or even hydraulic conditions, particularly if they're endemic, meaning they're not, they're not spilling out. A lot of times, it's effectively evaporated, and then it just affects the soil condition. So, in this particular case, the environmental assessment suggested that there would not be any negative spillover or any changes in hydrology that would negatively affect surrounding properties, or even wetlands that are not part of, that are of a different system. But again, we can let the experts clarify that, and I believe one of them is on the call.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Commissioner Wilcox?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
I'm seeing some contradictory information in our paperwork. See, one of them is... I was trying to think of a thought here. One of them is condition of approval number four, where you're calling for site obscuring bushes or whatever. And in the applicant's responses on page thirty-two, they're saying that's not required because it's essentially more of this, the neighbors are more of the same essentially. That's one of the contradictions.
With respect to the applicant, the staff determination is it does apply.
Okay. And my other one was, let me see. Oh, on the applicant refers to survey whiskers for marking the fire truck path in the gravel area. I don't know what a survey whisker is. Gresham Fire is saying those aren't acceptable.
Yeah, survey whiskers are effectively what they sound like. They are effectively extensions, vertical projections that are set into the ground that surveyors use typically to do markings. The concern about them, because we've had this before with another application that didn't go to planning commission, but had a gravel lot where they were trying to use them to outline what the fire egress would be, is that they get run over, or they are just effectively not a long-term solution for marking a fire path. They've had bad experiences with them before. So as a result, Gresham Fire will ask the applicant in the next phase, presuming it moves on to a next phase, for another way to handle that. There are some other ideas out there that they would consult with the applicant on how to accomplish that.
Another area I have questions on is the, there seems to be a difference in how much landscaping is required, and also how it's going to be irrigated. There's some reference to hand watering. Are you talking about bringing in a tanker truck full of water?
Yeah, in that situation, again, most commercial or most non-residential projects have an expectation of an irrigation system. The applicant's welcome to propose something like that, but that doesn't mean the city will accept it. And that would be something that, again, would have to be ironed out. It's not immediately, I mean, that could be maybe an amplified condition that the planning commission may wish to clearly state tonight, that it has to be a system. Do so at your risk, though, but you can also rely on staff to effectively enforce that expectation and that precedent, that irrigation systems are just that there, this is not not a water truck, or connecting with a garden hose.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thanks, Chris.
Sure.
Other questions for staff? I have one. We presently don't have a full connection to the stormwater system in that area. So where does the stormwater go?
Where does the stormwater go?
Yeah. If it's not going to the wetland, where would it be going?
I believe we would seek to have the applicant clarify that. I will tell you, though, that the public works group did look at it, and usually, they would be the ones who would provide correspondence on that. And I didn't see there. Let me double-check here. Yeah, to my knowledge, they did not raise it as an issue, and given that it is a gravel lot and not effectively vertical development, the same stormwater standards that you would normally see of a commercial application or industrial application are not always applicable here.
Okay.
But we'll confirm that, and if the applicant or their consultants want to speak to that, they're informed.
All right, if there's no other questions for staff at this time, we would like to hear from the applicant, and that would be PIR Dunbar LLC and Mr. Kreitzberg.
Thanks, folks. Yeah, this is Steve Kreitzberg. My address is nine seven five Southeast Sandy Boulevard in Portland, Suite 200, zip code four. And I'm the owner of Phoenix Adaptor Redevelopment, and I'm owner of PIR Dunbar LLC, which is the entity that owns this particular piece of property. And I'll touch on these questions in a little bit different order than they were asked, if you don't mind. Let me start with John Williams' question. We began to lay down gravel in February because we were going to expand the amount of area that we had on the site that was gravel. And that back portion of the property is about four acres total, so roughly 200,000 square feet of open area. And the wetland that we really didn't understand the detail... I'm sorry? The wetland that we really didn't understand the details of, it turns out, is 4,000 square feet. And the way to envision this wetland is it's a patch of soil that has different characteristics than in the past. So surely, it's your question, it actually, you can't think of it as being anything like a pond or a settling area. And I'll have the soils engineer, who's on the call with us here, Shirley, I'm sorry, Julie Worth McKee, will talk a bit more about this, but it's basically, I suspect, fifty or eighty years ago, when there wasn't as much development in the area, this might have been a more substantial thing, but you can see in the photographs, over time, that it's gradually gotten smaller and smaller. When I bought the property, it was basically buried in blackberries. And so, it just is this very small patch that turned out to be about 4,000 square feet. The VECO area, as Chris described, is bigger than that, but the wetland itself, which none of us was really sure was an accurate description of what was there until we did the engineering analysis, but it was that 4,000 square feet. And what we're doing is laying down gravel, and as Sandy asked, you do so in different style of rock, bigger rock and smaller rock in layers, and you do so largely to make sure that if you drive a fire truck to the back of the property, that fire truck won't sink. So the fire truck is actually the determining characteristic of how thick the gravel has to be. It ends up that you're putting down between eight and 10 inches of gravel. And as Chris mentioned, the entire four-acre area, if you think about it just from rain falling on that soil, when the gravel goes down, that rain just falls through the gravel. And that's why the storm department doesn't have any concerns about stormwater, because nothing's actually changing. about stormwater, because nothing's actually changing. The infiltration is still happening because water just fall, as any kid with a hose can demonstrate, the water falls right through the gravel. And the kinds, the reason we're doing this is that we often are approached by tenants who would be interested in leasing these spaces, as you heard Chris mentioned. In fact, I think, where's the photo? There we are. Sandy, you'll recall, all the way back when I first met you guys, when we got the approval to do that site as an entirely cannabis park. And then we got to a second one where we were actually moving a cannabis participant in. And all the while, that whole industry was in collapse. So when Chris says that cannabis is, or cannabis one is no longer going to take occupancy on the site, that's being generous. They've gone out of business like so many other. So what we've been doing is gradually evolving the site to conventional tenancies. And a very typical conventional tenancy would be a operating company of some type that needs expansion yard. Sometimes they call it lay-down space. So they might be building weldments, and they fabricate them inside and then move them outside and set them down and move them in again. They might be parking vehicles that come and go off the site. But the gravel itself is there to make the site more leasable to these other types of tenancies. The whiskers, and Chris did a good job of that, the whiskers are one of those things, it's very well named. Envision a metal pin and plastic whiskers, and you jam it in the ground, and the whiskers stand up like this, and you use them to mark the fire lane. And whiskers are one way to do it. A very similar method is a plastic disc that has a pin. The fire department, it turns out, doesn't like whiskers. They want us to use that plastic disc. So that's what we'll do. And the discs, as you can imagine, simply last longer because they lay right down on the rock. So I've covered when we began the gravelling, how big the pad or the wetland is, what the difference between just gravel and gravel pad, it's related construction of the pad, what we'll be doing on the pad, the whiskers, and the stormwater. Now, one thing that's been really interesting about this project, it's actually two projects in parallel. The first is everything we've covered so far. But the big issue was, you've got this little tiny patch of these, these unique soils that evidence this historical chunk that doesn't connect to any, any wetland anymore, or any other water, body of water anymore. But you have to get that VCO handled before you can do any kind of development. So it took a fair amount of time to get to this point because we've been running a project in parallel with the Department of State Lands. And the Department of State Lands has jurisdiction over whether you can do what they call a removal or fill permit for a wetland. So Julie Worth McKee, who's here on the call with us, was the engineer that did all of the environmental and soils engineering and worked with the Department of State Lands because you have to get approval to close a wetland like this. On the 18th of November, we got a full permit approval to close the wetland. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here in this meeting. And as part of that, you do mitigation. And we're doing, we're actually writing a check that goes into a fund that's used elsewhere in the state. But DSL doesn't give you that permit if any of the concerns about the wetland exist. And so, as you saw in our application, and as was affirmed by the DSL, the ultimate determination is this is a patch of unique soil that has some legacy but no longer connects in any way to any body of water, nor is it a habitat for anything. And as a result, DSL gives us that approval. And with that approval in hand, then we seek, what we're seeking here, which is the approval to do the actual gravel pad, because to do the gravel pad, we have to lay gravel over what would have been that wetland. But now that we have that wetland permit, the way that I think about it, I'm able to come to you guys saying, there is no longer a wetland, and there is no longer a VCO because that box has been checked. Now we're looking at it through the lens of planning and zoning, and as Chris pointed out, any other additional requirements related to the actual project, like screening or et cetera. So does that make sense? Did I cover all the questions?
I had one other question. Type of vehicles that will be there?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they would be the type that might have any kind of oil or coolant or brake fluid types of leakage into the ground?
Well, any vehicle that, of course, goes out on the road would have those kinds of things related to them. And that's not the principal use of the site, but there will undoubtedly be vehicles out there from point to point and time to time. And, but the good news is that, to the extent that stuff is falling, it's no different than it would be falling under pavement, and it's not aggregated into stormwater at that point. And in essence, the sun burns it off and cleans it up. So it'd be a very low-level item.
But isn't it gravel and pervious? Wouldn't it go into the ground?
Well, gravel is pervious, meaning that it'd be the equivalent of parking it on an open grassy field, yes. Now, the gravel, of course, is going to get stained before anything goes beyond that. Yeah. But that would be true of any gravel yard in any area of pavement, anywhere that has vehicle traffic.
So I guess my understanding was that the purpose was to allow for more storage space? I'm not particularly concerned about the vehicles coming and going as I am ones that sit there.
Yeah, the, we can park vehicle, parking vehicles is compliant with the zone. And so there's no doubt, Sandy, that we will, from time to time, park vehicles there. Yeah. But the real benefit we get out of a gravel yard like that is really lay-down space because you need that kind of room for equipment or trailers or other big stuff. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of outfits out there that just need room.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, Shirley.
Does, will there, and I can't, I'm speaking of the future, but just in, just in general, a business that decides to use it as storage for, like, containers, is that going to be part of that? I mean, could that be part of it? Just, I'm just for my own information.
Yeah, I, Shirley, I'm not 100% sure, but I assume, and that is an assumption, that if I had a tenant that wanted to put a cargo container down, that provided that's approved by the underlying zone, which I think it is, then yes, that could theoretically happen.
Okay.
And that's, that's a good example of the kinds of things that end up in these lay-down yards.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant?
Ms. Commissioner Wilcox, again, I didn't hear the issue of landscape irrigation addressed by the applicant.
Yeah, Paul, I heard you mention that. And it is a relatively recent addition, I guess in response to the final application that Chris is mentioning, that we might need to do some additional landscape buffering. And as Chris mentioned, we'll work that out directly with the planning staff. I don't know where the mention of a water truck came from. I don't, I don't recognize that as being part of the application. If it is, I must have missed it. The buffering or the amount of landscape that we, our plan, we believed, met the total. That was something that Kevin Russell, the PE, the engineer on the project, who's here on the call with us, addressed. But if Chris is going to need a little bit more and then wants to know, keep it alive, then that's something we would work out directly. The other alternative that we had discussed with the planning staff, and maybe this connects back in the same way, is screening. And as an example, putting plastic sticks in the existing fence as a visual screen. And maybe that's part of the same conversation.
Other questions? So how is this alleviating a hardship for you?
I'm sorry, who, how is that, how, the hardship came from the fact that we had to have a, basically to make the area work, you have to have circulation for the firetrucks. And with the wetland right in the middle and the VCO around it, the argument we made to the Department of State Lands is, given the simultaneous requirement of both the wetland and the fire trucks need for circulation to go all the way out and loop and come all the way back, that those two are mutually exclusive. It was obviously substantial and important that to the Department of State Lands, they were able to see that the wetland itself is completely isolated and completely cut off from being anything related to habitat or waterways anymore. And what they were basically saying is, hey, is there a way you can do what you want to do and not have to take out that little patch, that 4,000 square foot soil chunk? And the answer was no because of the requirements of the VCO. So the hardship came from, given that the fire circulation has to occur, the only way to get that done is to remove that wetland. And they obviously approved that, and therefore they agreed.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to speak to the application? All right. Motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, my motion to second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. How we all do it, Mr.? Question I had for you possibly, Chris, is, I was reading in here that the mitigation, 300 trees and 1,497 shrubs. At the end. Page 12 of the narrative.
Just reading it right now for a moment.
The other thing I'd say is just a little, almost confusing is, we've talked a lot about fire access and getting a fire truck in there and turning it around. But I don't really see much of that in the Gresham Fire's comments.
To answer that second one first, I think, given that they showed in exhibits showing what the turning templates would be, once the wetland is removed, they would not have had, they are responding to that site development review. Gresham Fire cares not about that status of the wetland. They cared about the finished product. And they were presented through the site development review of the finished product on the presumption that the wetland is removed.
Right.
And it met that standard.
I would just, with a thought, they'd say, hey, if he's skipping, you know, this is going to be great. We can get in there, turn around, that type of thing.
Um, yeah.
Thinking.
I think, my recollection is they had some pretty substantial comments to the applicant back in May during the pre-application, and I think the civil engineers adequately addressed them in the site development review, which is probably why they in particular may not have as many comments, among other reasons. Yeah. Again, the response that they show to your earlier question, Mr. Chair, I mean, that, that appears to be correct if they're utilizing option two in this particular case.
That's a lot of trickies unless they're cotton.
But again, that's, that's the prevailing VCO standard in that particular case.
Commissioner?
Chairman, this is...
Yes, Commissioner.
I have, I, again, this is the second one tonight that's come after the fact. I'm a little concerned that this is going to set a precedence, that it's okay as long as we mitigate it, that it's okay to do it first and then ask for forgiveness later.
Shirley, just to set the record straight, we didn't do, yeah, we didn't do the gravel. We began...
Mr. Kreitzberg, you're not permitted to speak at this moment. Sorry.
I mean, the work was done before. And I'm a little concerned that this is, this is going to repeat. And if, once we accept it, then it's going to be one after another. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with making a decision on something that's already been pretty much completed.
Chair, staff or something, can we ask the, can we ask Steve to expand on the circumstances of them gravelling prior to getting a, getting approval?
Kind of, yes, we can, but... Okay, so we would open the hearing back up to allow Mr. Kreitzberg to answer that question? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Shirley, just to be clear, we had put down some gravel in areas that was already gravelled when I bought the site. And we had begun the process of, I sent a guy out there with a bobcat who began to kind of smooth out the soil in preparation for that gravel work. And that's what basically had Chris and Marley saying, hey, Steve, what are you doing out there? You need approval for that. That's when we came in, and that was actually late February, we had our first meeting. But the gravel that I'm proposing now, there's about two and a half acres of gravel that needs to be done to build this yard, and none of it is laid down. So we're about to do so if we get approval, but we have not done so yet. So I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir. Can we go ahead and close the hearing again? Okay. So procedurally, we'll close the public hearing? Motion?
I show.
Okay. Do you want to second that, Shirley?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're closing again. Okay. Anyone else?
My only concern on all of this is just with the pervious surface, if you end up with storage containers or any kind of... or any kind of hazardous waste having any of that captured. I'm encouraged about the depth and the styling of the gravel pad. Nature does a pretty good job of filtering out, you know, minor leaks. But other than that, that's my only concern.
Okay, uh, anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a, this is probably more a statement right now, but we're going to be questioning, but I would like to elaborate on Commissioner Glantz's concern about the pervious gravel pad. Because if I understand correctly from the applicant, until November 18th, until they receive permit to close the wetland, this was indeed a wetland. Correct? So this was, in any effect, a pervious material, which means a material made of a substance allowing, allowing water to pass through a permeable material. So substantially, nothing is changing. The material is a permeable material with gravel, as it was with a wetland, if I understand correct. So I'm, I'm not, I'm concerned about the natural material because in the, in substance, nothing changes to me to what I see right now. If it's a wetland, it's a permeable material. If it's a gravel, it's a permeable material because by definition of it was a pervious material. But my question for, is for staff now to allow some assistance here. Chris, you, you are recommending approval we condition, which is contingent upon satisfactory resolution of all the condition as submitted by other cities departments. And, which is fine for me. It seems to me also that your condition, the planning division condition, do focus and crystallize on landscaping issue, with landscaping requirement. So my question is, there is a lot of landscaping. Of course, this seems to be the quipro quo we have with the applicant. We allowed all these mechanisms, but in return, there is this, this marketing transaction. So does the city of Traddell have a mechanism, an established protocol about landscape maintenance agreements? You know, in your report, you say there also is maintenance of the gravel. We have some sort of inappropriateness. We're not talking about economic development. Call back provision where we know that what we ask in return for granting this variance, which is extensive landscape, is going to be well maintained, well kept. And so, simple question is, do we have a landscape maintenance agreement that extend also to other parts of the landscape? Being gravel, being the fence, being the berm, and so on and so forth.
Okay, uh, yes. To, to answer the question, there's not so much a standard of agreement, but standards that are put in the code that they, that landscaping in particular has to be of, of good health and has to be mature within a certain time upon planting. There's an expectation that the landscape is kept up and that it is irrigated. Uh, that is actually, that's stated in the code. For the gravel situation, it, it, that kind of stuff historically has not been regulated so much by planning and by code, but more particularly by fire and emergency services, who usually will do annual checks on property to make sure, much like they would check a fire extinguisher in a business space, they would check on the soil compaction or the gravel compaction standards to make sure that their apparatus can drive on it correctly. So normally, uh, the maintenance of gravel, unless it became a problem or a nuisance, usually is regulated more through aggression fire and not through planning. Landscaping, historically, that would be incumbent upon the development code and, and general property maintenance and understanding through a landscape plan, which landscape plans, as you know, Gianpaulo, they usually contain not just where the plantings occur, but how the plantings have to be planted, how they have to be kept up, kept up, and how the irrigation is going to be supporting that. So you, that's what, when we say an updated landscaping plan, those set management practices that are usually those notes in those plan sets, we would be reliant upon that as an official declaration by the applicant that they are intending to meet the code and to keeping it up. We, we wouldn't require a separate agreement. What we are going to do in this particular case or what we're proposing is that if the applicant is not trying to, if the applicant does not desire to do a typical site irrigation plan or irrigation system, we can say, okay, fine, what is your solution? And then provide an operations and maintenance plan on how they intend to irrigate the plant. So it's a way of affording a little bit of flexibility if, for whatever reason, the applicant doesn't wish to pursue a standard irrigation system.
Uh, and if, Chris, thank you very much, by the way. And if I may have a follow-up question. In the previous case, I decided not to dwell on assumption and speculation about what the use could be, but I have to go there and ask this rhetorical question. What if the property is sold? What kind of warranty do we have that a future owner might maintain the property as established with this applicant, with the property right now? So substantially so, what can we do about it?
Um, well, it's a fair question. I, you know, with, with landscaping installation, usually those landscape contractors, which are licensed by the state, there, there usually is a warranty anyway of some sort. Uh, if the property transacts, again, it's just the, the assumed responsibility that the new owner would take to maintain the landscaping regardless of, of how it, it occurred. If an operations and maintenance plan was, was part of that deal and, and maybe a unique irrigation system was put in place, that would have to be disclosed presumably by the selling, the selling company. But that's one of the reasons why most commercial businesses will, or, or sites, or non-residential, I should say, opt for an irrigation system that is at least managed and can be maintained on a regular basis.
Let me ask you more, more specifically. What happened if the applicant? And I'm not suggesting that he will. It's a crass, but I, this is not, this is not, you know, try to guess, but I, what happened if the applicant? Any applicant? Say, yes, I'll do all these beautiful things for you guys. Thank you very much for allowing me to develop. And, and he does not do it. What measure do we have? And the other question, and I apologize, is this is, looks, seems to be an overflow for parking in some respect, as suggested by the applicant. Is this also projecting a future driveway access on Northwest 7th Street from this tax block?
Okay, so to answer that, that latter question, the applicant would have to obtain a public works permit to make sure that they had access, that they could, they could tie into 7th Street as a city-owned road. So they would have to just simply secure that. It's pretty.
Okay. So at this point, there is none projected or proposed?
Say that again, sir?
At this point, there is none projector or proposed.
As far as access from 7th?
That is correct.
Let me, give me one moment to verify that.
I, I think, I think I saw the emphatic answer from the applicant, so I'm, I'm satisfied with that. Thank you very, thank you very much. Good. Well, thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Sure. The other thing to your, your point, Mr. Mamoné, the, um, the question about how do we maintain or how do we keep it up? I mean, we have a couple of, of points, either upon building permit issuance or upon certificate of occupancy, we would certainly make inspections of any systems that were called out in a plan, for starters, number one. Number two, it's just kind of general, as we would call it, complaint-driven code compliance. If, if a situation arises on a site where the applicant is not fulfilling basic sites development upkeep or expectations of upkeep, whether they were conditioned in a land use approval or whether they're just regular code standards, we have the right to hold up those standards through the nuisance code and through the business license section. And if they're failing to do so, we have legal recourse to do that. So we would pursue it in that way.
Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Yeah, Chris, just a quick question. When we talk about maintaining the gravel and Sandy had brought up all the fluids from vehicles and everything that could be out there. If the owner is leasing the property out or sections of the property out, is that responsibility come, going to come back on the landowner or the person doing the lease?
Technically, it can be both, but ultimately, it's the property owner.
Okay.
Uh, in, in the past, we, we, we have had, unfortunately, to cite people for those situations. And, and the law allows for both the tenant and the, the property owner to be cited in that regard. And then if there's a dispute between those parties, then that's obviously a private party legal affair.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, quiet. Oh, this is tough.
Um, one reminder again, while staff, again, is not really appreciative of the situation that we find ourselves in, to effectively retroactively improve some of the work that has been done. It should be noted that there was a significant amount of, of scientific and engineering study that went into the application, which we told the applicant that was their potential path towards getting compliance as well. And in addition to getting this body's potential approval. And the applicant has been largely thorough in, in doing that. So even though the initial reason here wasn't great, admittedly, they've fulfilled our expectations for, for getting, for compliance.
And so for clarification, there's not going to be fire truck access up at 7th?
No.
No?
Not from what I can tell in the plan section?
I'm just trying to understand what the advantage is for the fire department.
Uh, I believe in your package sheet, C200, that's one of the 11 by 17 sheets here. If you, if you look at that sheet, basically, where that fire access lane is, it could not have been effectively extended or calibrated i- i- in order really to maximize the potential of this site, to really utilize it for that purpose. It, it requires the wetlands, the, the blue buffer, if you will, that's, that VECO boundary to effectively be, be cleared. I think that's the argument the applicant is making.
Yeah, to develop the entire site, yes.
And as far as the fire department, if they had to position on that property to fight a fire on another property, is what they'd be looking at.
Yeah, that's another aspect of it. It's not, when they look at these things, it's not just the property in question. It's the surrounding properties in the north and east here too.
It'd just be really helpful if they would just state that.
We can't write their comments for them, you know that.
Okay. I'll say, the other thing that's difficult is, you know, it grabs a lot when you don't know what's going to be put on it. Granted, you know, it's, it's pervious surface. You know, the gravel is same as a wetland. It's usually don't park trucks on a wetland. Any other comments, anyone? You're all quiet.
Is, Mr. Wilcox again?
Yes.
Uh, the condition of approval, number two, I would have preferred that that had been settled in advance rather than be a condition of approval, kind of an after-the-fact thing.
Prior to this point? Anyone else? I think you've all brought up some very good points. Anyone feel strong enough to make a motion? One way or the other? Commissioner Whitaker?
Make a motion to approve LU 0015-2020 Dunbar Industrial Storage Yard with conditions set by staff?
I second.
Okay, uh, we're going to take these, we need to take the variance first, okay? So is that okay? Do you want to tie? Okay. Amendment to your motion? Okay, so, uh, we have a motion and a second for case file LU 0015-2020 Dunbar Industrial Storage Yard for the type three variance.
And this would be adopting the findings of facts?
Yes.
As presented?
Findings of fact as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, uh, could you call the roll, please, Ms. Shapford?
Yes, Commissioner Whitaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Glantz?
Yes.
Chair Staffenson?
No. Okay, that passes. Okay. Let's run a roll. Anyone conditions first?
Uh, you'll want to have findings of facts through, for site development review would be your next step.
Okay. Okay, the next one would be approving findings of fact, site development review. Final order should be at the end.
Yeah, final order, conditions would come third.
Okay. So we'd be approving findings of fact of site development review? Is there a motion for that?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve finding of fact and site development review for case file LU 0015-2020 Dunbar Industrial Storage Yard. And any discussion on the motion?
Back on.
Oh, sorry. Who was that?
I think Mr. Mamoné had to handle it.
Okay, Mr. Mamoné. Did you?
Mr. Mamoné, did you have a comment? Your hand was up?
Uh, no. No comment.
Okay. Okay, uh, Ms. Shapford, please.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Glantz?
Yes.
Chair Staffenson?
No. Okay, that one passes? And so I'm guessing that now you will want to have
Sorry, next one would be final order, decision and conditions of approval.
Right. Okay, so now we'd be looking for a motion for conditions of approval, final order, and decision for case file LU 0015.
I make a motion as so?
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second uh to accept conditions of approval as written. And final order and decision for case file LU zero zero one five dash two zero two zero Dunbar Industrial Storage Yard. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Ms. Shapford.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Glantz?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
No.
Please be consistent. Okay, that passes. Okay, appreciate your time, everyone. And we will move on to the next agenda.
And we will be in touch with uh Mr. Kreisberg and the P I R team, thank you. Uh, we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, we're done.
You are done?
You're all set?
Yep.
We'll, we'll touch base with you tomorrow, Steve, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Okay, um, agenda six. Okay. So uh, we'll try to keep this one short because we're already coming up on quarter to ten here. Uh, but no, no real action you can take tonight, but we did wanna stick a memo in your, your app, in your packet. Uh, discussing about the idea, even though it's, uh, as we say, it's always been done before to have meetings on the third Wednesday of the night. Uh, whether or not the planning commission is interested in perhaps moving your meetings up two days to a Monday evening. Uh, one of the rationale, reasons behind that is in certain cases, particularly for type four applications or applications where they may want to appeal your decision, it may allow for a quicker turnaround uh and overall development review timeline uh for some of these applicants coming in. Uh, so this memo that we provided, provided an, an instance of that. Whereas what could sometimes take twenty to twenty-seven days between hearings could be as short as eight days. Uh, given that the information that we're preparing for city council is effectively the exact same information we prepare for planning commission, only we just add how you effectively recommended in action. Um, to date, to our knowledge, there haven't been any regular meetings of the city board on a Monday night. Occasionally, we have had special meetings uh where attendance has been good generally for Monday nights. So I guess that would be the question for you all, is if that is of interest to you. And if it is, then at your next meeting in January, we would just have to let people know that you are intending to potentially vote on it. There's no change to the city charter required, there's no approval by city council that's required. All it takes is a simple majority vote of planning commission to change your bylaws and your bylaws were the attached documents to this memo uh at the end. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I, I have a couple. Um, so what this would really do is if we move to Monday, a decision from this body could be in front of the city council.
The week later.
Eight days later. Okay, um, and that's the advantage, otherwise it is the better part of three weeks.
Correct.
Okay, and it also says in here, it also allows for, we have seven days between hearings to be consistent with state law. I believe we can go longer than seven days.
You can go longer, you have to have a minimum seven days. So you couldn't, you couldn't have your hearing on the third Wednesday and then that next Tuesday when council meets, that's six days. So that's not technically permitted. You have to, yeah, and provided that you make that, or that the city ultimately makes that decision within a hundred and twenty days. So what it does is it also reduces the pressure on the one hundred and twenty day calendar for decision taking.
Uh, commissioners?
Chris, do you see any negativity, any negative aspects of changing the day?
Uh, unless you wanna watch Monday night football, but since they moved the primary game to Sunday night, um. No, joke aside, I mean, for some people, and again, for, we've had some long timers on the planning commission, Wednesday, the third Wednesday is an expected date. And if, if other calendars or other committees have gotten in the way where Monday night is being used for another thing, that's a paradigm shift, so we wanna be obviously respectful of that. For staff, it, it makes really no difference to us.
Uh, Chris, one, one question. Um, I, I, let me first say that I don't have any objection whatsoever, it's irrelevant for me. But should uh an holiday fall on a Sunday and celebrate it on a Monday by the city, then they would postpone the meeting to a Tuesday, correct?
It could, or it could kick to another week or an agreed upon time. The only holiday that we're, we're forecasting we would have a change would be Martin Luther King Day in January. Uh, would be the only Monday. All, all the other holidays are either the first or second Monday or the fourth Monday, like Memorial Day. So really, the, the January meeting would be maybe the only one where you would run into that issue. And I think in that case, we usually defer it to the second or the fourth Monday, depending on what this body could, could entertain. We have to do that anyway regularly, um, in April, when, when the budget committee meets. Usually we've had to switch around a planning commission meeting to allow the budget committee to do a meeting. So we're used to having to shift every now and then.
Okay, thank you. And the, the follow up question is this, it's reading, reading your report is that we have to uh change um the bylaws of the planning commission. So.
Correct.
Again, an assumption, I, I hope it's an educated assumption, that the language uh specific about planning commission meeting was very specific, almost too specific, which usually is not, you know, as country and treaty, but as I go along with this kind of uh date, not for planning commission, not for council, uh, even in city charter. So are we gonna try to introduce some little more vague language where the planning commission will meet once a month? And then there is freedom without breaking these bylaws of the city charter for the com, the commission to convene or reconvene whenever is appropriate or needed.
We, we can meet more than once a month.
Yeah, it actually in, in the, um, in the city's comprehensive plan, uh, it actually talks about that planning commission should from time to time, consider more than one meeting a month uh to better accommodate development proposal for, for in and for. And I will tell you, and maybe Commissioner Glantz will be happy to hear that since she'll be in a different body. Uh, but she'll actually see a lot of work. Uh, twenty twenty-one is gonna be an extremely busy year for this body. Uh, and it's not just gonna be applications like you heard tonight, there's gonna be some pretty substantial policy things and recommendations you're gonna be making. Um, so I would imagine, and it could be as soon as February, quite honestly, that you may have more than one meeting a month. Um, obviously, this change, however, would not be able to go into effect until March because we would have to certainly allow for notification for any applicant uh in advance. So uh, this doesn't, this, even if you decided you wanna do it in January, you, it wouldn't have been a flat toll, so it's the first meeting in March.
I'm, I'm confused because again, it, to me is irrelevant if it's one time or twice a month. But if we are right now, you asking us, you're, you're telling us on the, on this, on the staff report that we have to change the bylaw of the planning commission. So if it's one, twice a month, if the language is vague enough where it says the planning commission will meet once or twice a month, without specifying the first Monday or the Thursday, Tuesday or the second Wednesday, that to me is the way to proceed. Because otherwise we find our staff confronted potentially again with, where you have to make an amendment to, to the bylaws. And this is usually the approach we take, even with city charter, we're from meeting on the planning or the city council, where we try to remove that specific date because now that you're in breach of the city charter or, or bylaws of the planning commission. So my question to you was, are we trying to, gonna be a little more vague in this? Regardless if it's one meeting a month or two meetings a month, the planning commission will meet once or twice a month. And then the date can change. Yes, we're gonna establish probably a protocol, but, but it's an informal protocol, it's almost by resolution instead of by, by ordinance, where you have to go through the entire legal system. And so that to me is the way to proceed, and that's what I would like to recommend or suggest. Meet planning commission if it's made, even if we meet three times a month. But if we are vague, then we can decide at the convenience of the commissioner without going through a change of bylaws or a change of charter.
And, and I understand that you would, we would still do a bylaw change and just be, you're correct, more vague about the date.
Sure, that's.
But we would still put in for a bylaw change.
Yeah, because section seven A on page three has a very specific on the third Wednesday of each month. So if it, if, if we understood you correctly, Commissioner, and you would be saying that the planning commission will meet monthly period basically, and then B, the second meeting per month is necessary. Uh, second meeting of, of, uh, can be scheduled at the location indicated above at the discretion of calendar or whatever it might be.
Yes, I, I, I guess you're correct. I guess the, the, in this situation, it's actually to, to simplify the process, to make it easy to comply, to be a little more vague, so.
The only thing I think we would have to check with, and even though D L C does, D L C D doesn't have jurisdiction over your bylaws, I think we still have to report to D L C G when regularly scheduled meetings are expected to occur. And I don't know if that has to be built into the bylaws or if that could just be a separate resolution you all passed, but we'll, we'll do some digging on that in the meantime between now and January and advise you all on it.
Yes, informally, you have the responsibility to establish so that the public knows when we're meeting instead of changing every week. That of course is, is by nature of, of, of the process itself. But, but legally, if you keep it vague, then allows you to, not to be in breach of the law.
Sure, certainly the second meeting of the month, because we haven't always followed the fourth Wednesday.
Correct, and we've been known for adding meetings. I guess that, so we would do this um so that an application can turn around quicker, correct?
Effectively.
Okay, why not, why not add a council meeting?
Yeah.
They're scheduled.
That may be a fair question, um, maybe an incoming city council could.
Well, I'm just curious, and I'm, I'm not trying to pick on things here, but in two thousand nineteen, the council canceled twenty-five percent of their scheduled meetings. And in twenty twenty, they scheduled, they canceled over nineteen percent of their scheduled meetings.
Why?
And I just. What was that?
Why did they cancel them?
Why do they?
Mm-hmm.
Various reasons.
Okay. So the point is that even if the planning commission moves to Monday, it might be that the Tuesday meeting doesn't happen of the following week, that's the concern?
Correct.
Okay, fair concern?
There is also some calendar precedent too. I mean, it says by statute, council only technically has to meet once a month.
Right.
Uh, and historically, they've only met mu- once a month in July and August, usually the first availability in July, the second availability in August, and then in December usually, usually, although this year is a little different, uh, there's usually only one December meeting too. Um, but you know, that's certainly a valid question, but one that obviously the staff can't, can't handle. That could be kicked up for sure, though.
And, and of course, I'm one person, it does cause a little bit of a hardship for me.
For Mondays?
Well, I, I volunteer at my church. And I do all of their financial stuff on Monday evenings, and I set that up about twelve years ago because this was, you know, you know, I mean, that was the night that I wouldn't be here, so to speak. And that's just me.
So alternatively, it could be instead of the third Wednesday, it could be the second Wednesday.
No, it, it could, provided the parks advisory committee would be interested in swapping their Wednesdays, which is, you know, we can explore that possibility too. That's, that's not outside the realm of impossibility.
Um, Commissioner Whitaker?
No, I'm good.
Okay, that's you, you're answered.
I would. My, Monday is hard because sometimes we don't get the packet till Friday, and that gives me two days to. And this packet I read like twice, and my head was spinning the first time, so I had to recover from that the first time and then read it again, so I didn't miss anything. So to get it, we'd have to get it like on Wednesday even to think about having enough time to process all the information and go through it and make sure we make an informed decision. So if we get it on Friday, it shortens the time for us to even look at it.
Well, I think the staff commitment there is we would get the packets to you a week earlier. It's make up for that time, because, and honestly, that puts a burden on staff uh to have a Monday meeting because we would need to have, we would be pushing up our internal deadlines to get packets out to you. But we would recognize that, um, that that would be important, and we would ideally get it out the Fri-, not the Friday before the meeting, the Friday before that Friday, um, would be our, would be our goal to get that. And that way you would have um more ample time to do that.
Would it help if council tried to set us a more firm schedule of what the primary date was each month?
Potentially, it doesn't remove the, the fact that you would maybe still have that twenty to twenty-seven day uh delay. Um, I, the, the idea of maybe switching with parks advisory committee on for that second Wednesday, even though it would be the day after a planning commission, that definitely would reduce it by a week then to say, what, uh, thirteen to twenty days as opposed to twenty to twenty-seven days. So it kind of goes in concert with that. Um, and that's something we can do too, if, if you, if you want to give us direction on that, we can check in with the parks advisory committee, see if they're okay with just flip flopping the dates with you all. Um, and that way you don't have to expect a change of day of the week, but you're still able to somewhat accomplish the goal of reducing that timeline.
Chris? This is Paul.
Sure.
Uh, I just wanted to mention when you start uh trying to switch other committees around, I, I know for a fact there are some people that are on both Parks and C A C, so you might be messing with their schedule, personal schedules.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I, I mean, before, uh, before we would bring this matter back to you in January, parks advisory committee would be scheduled to meet in that, that second week, and we could potentially, or I could get, work with Tim Theory and get us on the agenda for them to contemplate that to see if they have any feedback. And then you would have that feedback available to you in, for your January meeting. And if they're open to it, then it could be potentially worked out, if not.
Okay, is there a preference among the council commissioners at this point?
You don't have to change it either, you can keep it the way it is, uh, it was just something we identified and we thought it was worth, worth uh exploring with you all.
Um, Commissioner Wodilla?
Wednesday's word is playing for me, it's set its precedent. And which Wednesday of the month?
Doesn't matter.
We could switch that.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm flexible, I could do any Monday or Wednesday, and it doesn't matter what week, so. I'm open to moving.
Rich, what about you? Where's Rich?
Yeah, Mr. Al's gonna be joining us soon.
Yeah, so, uh, well, what I know from council, uh, since I've attended a lot of their meetings, is that if there was something important coming forward, they would have their meeting. I am flexible on the date, uh, however, I am sensitive to it possibly causing a problem for ten.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, anyone else?
I like Wednesday, doesn't matter which Wednesday, just 'cause it's easier for me. I'm sorry, I'm selfish at that point.
It's okay. You've been here a long time.
Yeah, too.
It sounds like there are three definite. It sounds like there are three definite for Wednesdays. Okay. And is there anyone, uh, just gone for Monday?
I'm, I'm open to anything you guys decide, public, I know, like Monday or Wednesday for me are, are fine. Just the same. I don't have any preference.
So would it be appropriate for staff to be able to reach out to parks advisory committee to see about their interest in potentially switching the second to third Monday, or Wednesday, rather?
Yeah, I, I would say see if they have an interest and then come back to us.
Yes.
Right? We won't commit to anything at this time. Okay.
Okay, we can do that for sure. Thank you. That's good direction.
All right, move on. Department reports.
Couple of quick things for you. Um, we have, uh, begun work on sixty percent trail design, uh, for the future trail along the Sandy Riverfront in the urban renewal area, the Confluence Site. Uh, we have brought on now a structural engineer to begin work on the elevated walkway component of it, which basically keeps it as much out of the flood plain as possible. It's a pretty big project, but, uh, it's gonna be helpful in us continuing to try to get regional and other sources of funding beyond just the city, uh, to build this trail, which could really be awesome. So that's one thing we're working on. Um, I kind of alluded to it earlier, uh, expecting very busy 2021. Uh, we thought we were gonna have some things on the holiday quarter tonight, but given the applications we had, uh, we decided to defer it. Also, there needed to be still a little bit of work done on it. So you can expect that for January, and, uh, once we have that baked, we will send it out to you in advance, even prior to the regular package, so you can take a look at it. Um, Amber, do we have anything else from our, from your perspective?
Can't think of anything.
Uh, beyond that, it's been a long, strange, weird year, but, um, this group has done really well. We appreciate all of you, you guys making quorum and being involved and engaged. Uh, we will wish you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and, um, to Commissioner Glantz, it's been an honor to, to work with you. You've made staff better. We really appreciate, uh, your service, and we look forward to working with you as Councilor Glantz. And it's gonna be hard to say Councilor Glantz and Councilor Crand. I'll be...
Yeah, I know. It was like that when we were commissioners, too. It's...
Back, back to the old days of, uh, commissioner. So, but, uh, congratulations, Dan, and, uh, we look forward to working with you at that level.
Thank you.
And congrats to Mr. Allen for his elevation. That's it for us.
Okay. Um, okay, it, the council committee is nearly finished with their work, and, um, there's kind of a minor oversight where this is scheduled to be viewed by council, um, and actually before it goes to planning commission. And I didn't want you guys to not have the opportunity to view the whole hundred and ninety-four pages document. I thought it'd be a great opportunity for you. Uh, and so it is coming to you in January. What's gonna happen is, uh, it's gonna go to council just so they can view it, then it's going to planning, and then planning will do a recommendation to council, okay? And, um, it's kind of an important step that we don't want to miss. There's an awful lot to this document, and there's an awful lot in this document that planning is responsible for. So it's gonna be real important, uh, that we weigh in on this before it goes to council officially, which will be what, March, February?
February and March, yeah.
February. Depending on, uh, how long we take to go through it, I guess it's probably work session and a meeting and, uh, do it. Okay?
And what was the document again?
The town center plan.
Ah, okay, thanks.
Okay, any questions on that?
The plan, there is a draft of both the executive summary, which is a much more digestible twenty pages, and the full report. It is on the city's website. We'll be sure to send out a link to you all. It is ready for initial review, but understand that that draft will be subject to change, uh, by both the town center committee and frankly, by your body.
And, uh, I, I do want to officially welcome Rich Allen, uh, to the commission, moving from the alternate spot in. Uh, Rich, you got a lot of experience, um, and you were a counselor, and we're excited to have you. But I gotta tell you, from a planning perspective, it's a pretty big set of shoes to fill. So, uh, good luck and, uh, welcome aboard. Okay, and with that, uh, anybody have anything before we close? Commissioner Whitman?
Nope.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing here.
Okay. Commissioner Ramone?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Prickett?
Uh, happy holidays, and Sandy, you're gonna be missed. And Rich, welcome. Glad you're on our team. Look forward to sitting in on a city council meeting with you, too, Sandy, just to sit and observe.
Hello, and, uh, Commissioner Widdilla?
And you want a comment I have? It seems like only a few months ago that Sandy spoke to the commission as a citizen, and shortly thereafter, she became planning commissioner. Congratulations on your upgrade.
Thank you. It was like thirteen years ago, but that's fine.
You know, I don't know that we consider it an upgrade, but you, you know, we'll go along with that tonight. Uh, Sandy, uh, you're a good friend, and, uh, you'll be sorely missed by all of us.
I'll still come visit, I promise.
Okay, we'll look forward to that.
Any part, any parting shot from you?
Just thanks to everybody. I really have enjoyed working with you. It's been wonderful to be able to have, you know, good conversation and disagreements and, uh, be professional and still be friends. So I will miss you guys, too.
Thank you. We will miss you. And, um, with that, I want to thank everybody for all their work this year, dedication and professionalism. And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And with that, uh...
Thank you.
Moving adjourned.
A second.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, thank you. Bye-bye.
Everyone.